Okay, as some of you may know, I have requested that the administration send some of the directors here to answer some of the questions and concerns that you and as well as many of us have in terms of what's going on with Plaza, particularly with the inspectors and that. But I have also provided the House of Authority a study for this with it, and they are here to see me. I ask you two representatives if you will come up at this time? Thank you, Mr. President. May the initiatives here, uh, let us hear, um, you know, as we say hi to all of the, uh, House of people here, um... I'm sorry, before we move on, uh, to our meeting... My name is John Johnson, Director of the Division of Housing Authority, Captain Mark, Deputy Director of the Division of Housing Authority. Uh, we are aware of the problem of the Plaza. Uh, we are aware of the concerns of the residents. Uh, we experienced, uh, the same situation that we did, uh, higher homes in the border there more than ten years ago. You know, um, and I understand the difficulty in living in that type of situation. Uh, the House of Authority does have something involved with the Plaza, but like everybody who's lived in the model, we are not owners of the building, so we do not own Plaza. There were some things said tonight which may be very fractious, particularly about some residents receiving these section eight vouchers that we don't even know about. So I would take some of the things, you know, that we had done, for instance, some of the things that we would be doing, you know, to try and move this project along. We do have the first, actually, new component. It's a partnership between the government of our own and the House of Authority. So we have set aside some space for a lot of money, you know, to build the first new building. And that, we have a responsibility, we're in place. It doesn't, it doesn't address the need and the present needs of residents that live in there under the current situation. Uh, we did make a attempt, two tests, to receive a large-scale development plan from the University of Washington Development, uh, that was not successful. Um, that would help, um, with Plaza now, especially in a term that allows us to assess the procedure and particularly on, uh, relationship with the Board of Education. So, I mean, maybe that's where our application. Um, so, we, right now, we do not have any additional funding for it to do any new moving ahead partnerships. Everybody needs to understand, residents as well as council, we really don't have, you know, whether we're available with section eight vouchers to assist in, you know, getting some of the residents out of the Plaza. Did I need this, uh, the Director of the Department of Housing to discuss this? Um, not that easy. In two hundred, the year 2013 is an opt-out year for section voucher for the Plaza. And that may bring a better, uh, activity or efficiency for some of the residents to be able to take advantage of conversion to project-based voucher to, to the actual section. Project-based voucher, when you say opt-out year, what is that? Well, the, uh, the, the actual project-based voucher, it's still in the sixth year. Before 2016, at Plaza, the owner of that building, correctly, uh, the owner of that building came out of, of the section cutting.
The term on project-based contract.
Please come to my question, of course, in order to say.
The term on project-based contract will expire by the end of 2013. I'm not sure which Plaza. At which time, the owner can opt out of the project-based section appropriate end request of HUD, that those project-based vouchers be converted to tenant-based vouchers. At which time, in HUD, federal HUD, the Field Office of Commerce will authorize X number, random amount of vouchers to the project families needing to move in. Uh, and that's what the sixth was referred to before. That was opt-out clause of owner developer of whatever project was involved. Uh, now, the owner can opt to stay in the project-based voucher. They can continue to open up a new contract, or they can opt out. At which time, that convert project-based voucher to a tenant-based voucher. But again, that's 2013, we're almost there. Between that and then, it can be a long time for people who are living in non-separate conditions.
Okay, so all of these, if they decide to opt out, then the residents will then be able to take their section and move it around somewhere else?
They should be, because one of the federal HUD offices authorized more money to convert those project-based vouchers. Because the whole Housing Authority, namely us, the Division of Housing Authority, we have no new funding, and we are at budget capacity now for the dish holders that would happen in program. And that's part of the problem. Some of the residents that live in Oldwood are on my waiting list. I have over three thousand names on my section eight waiting list. I may never get to some of those families just because there's so little funding in section eight program. Over this past summer, we took a twenty percent in this great cut to the section eight program. These cuts in our subsidy, in our admin fees and things like that, all affect the number of people that we concern. And in addition to that, uh, like I said, there are families that are on our list from Oldwood that are on our section eight waiting list, that are on my housing waiting list, pursuing the true round-up manner. Uh, if I could get to them, that would be great, but I can't bring them in ahead of everybody else because that's unfair for younger people that are on the waiting list. So we did just open up, in March of 2012, I opened up the waiting list for both families and seniors. So hopefully, some residents that overperceived upon the opportunity have signed up as fast as I can be. It seems I would run through that, that, that list, that waiting list. But I have that eight hundred families on my family waiting list. And that, the senior list is changing every, every day because that list never closes, because that's what it all times. So if there are seniors that want to sign up, you can sign up anytime or you can order a voucher. I'll add that application.
So can I speak to it? I'm interested in what the president is saying. Is it not, oh, thank you? Okay, now, the proper speaking session is over. Um, okay, would you finish with your presentation? Um, well, we'll pass, you know, one thing, um... I, I seem, it seems to me that there is, uh, somebody's got to have a meeting where all the parties that some of this valley is around. It's a gentleman's point, you know, he, he, he's a, you know, a wall. He's not everything new. And, you know, we may need to, yes, we said, I mean, nobody wants to say, you know, I... I, I think sometimes, sometimes it's so, we lost, I think, or we was, you know, that nice and special, uh, I don't, I don't know what they mean, you know. Yeah, we can do it too, but I don't, I don't think there's enough, uh, we really have very interesting to be sitting here on, I mean. And, you know, I think maybe, you know, President Obama, he may want to have a session. We're not, you know, maybe we think advance, you know, makes some progress. There will be some changes coming up. It doesn't, it doesn't satisfy any resident that is in any existing situation or condition today, I got that. The things are going to change. But I think if we made a fuller role, it's simply better than staying in a closed, you know, home room, set group of discussions on the subject. I think, um, Ms. Vice, the tension is this. She would move and accept people on this section eight waiting list out of the Plaza. I do have these going, you can keep in mind, we did accept hundreds of them. But we were ready to demand those final holding in the border there. We got a hundred and eighty ready section eight vouchers. If you need a new people who will be out of the Plaza, who will be there, they can opt out, take their voucher, and take it whatever, or take it for a year, come back. We don't have, we have no section eight vouchers. Every body, any school has to understand. I, I mean, said, you know, it doesn't necessarily, you know, get into, you know, the resident side of the people's bill, but, you know, we do understand, uh, it is a work for progress. We're going to continue, you know, trying to, yes, it could be said that, that we can, the House of Commerce, but, but everybody does understand. I think about the rules of that, but, any questions? So, once again, the Federal Housing Authority would have to approve any change in that project-based voucher. And there's no way the Housing Authority, this, this Housing Authority can assume the section eight over at Oldwood Plaza. I don't, I guess, I guess, I guess in the opt-out, we expedite, yeah, and, and expedite. Opt-out, I'm not going to exp- expedite, because in opt-out, it's before, you know, another office, which more than just the opening, the offices, the hotel here, you know, was an animal park, the office, people are eating over there. And, I mean, I think, I mean, we, 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 it might, you know, and, you know, they're just not going to be selling the opt-out. If they want a little better, possibly get to that opt-out building in 2013, I'm sure that's where everybody will be checking that. I just can't go to, to, I can't go to the club and say, hey, then we had those, whatever five thousand left, and that you take all of your out of the Plaza, you know, okay, it serves us. If I had a new section eight authority, we could assist people in finding homes and anything, we would do the section eight voucher. Do, do my asking, right? This is the way I look, as a project-based builder, as a project-based section eight builder, since in 1986, we were the section eight voucher attached to each individual apartment. If you live in a new apartment, you can take advantage of voucher. If you do not live in a new apartment, voucher stays with the building and not for the person. All of our vouchers, we had houses that belonged to the person, and that person has taken and moved around those two types. That's the problem with me. Okay, I'd like to open up to my colleagues that I have any questions? Any council members have any questions? Council members?
I have, uh, that's it. I have something to do with the website, with this particular situation, with this president. And I rely there on the three counties that the gentleman mentioned before, Manyhova, Sebadian, Perkins. Yeah, three of, two are large, eventually are large, and then the other one is the Board Council, which is actually the leaders of that particular area, that try the best in order to forward the information to the proper authority. You try the best as the president, the senator, to make sure that if there is a voter lead, the voter helped, we know about it. Mr. Grover mentioned the first night to all the members of the president, and apparently, the senator will almost come and back every week, every week. And Mr. Grover mentioned, you have to stop firing lawsuit against the landlord, the city, and we explained to them once before. This is a private property, as Mr. Johnson mentioned tonight. Has nothing to do with the city, has nothing to do with the Housing Authority. Any failure from the landlord, complaint must go to the agency, and you also stress that, Mr. President. But yeah, but yeah.
Can you, Matt, explain?
Uh, I've been getting accused, you know, I resent it when somebody speaks against somebody without having the proper facts, without having the proper knowledge. You come to my chamber, I represent the city. You have no right to offend my city, that you come from another town and only live in Elizabeth for two days. And what I said, and the councilman from the fourth ward, or fifth ward, or third ward, we have so much progress going on in the city of Elizabeth. We worked so hard to betterment our people, whether it's the school, whether it's the city, whether it's the housing, whether it's everything else. And yes, somebody from other town comes and says bad things about the city. I didn't call anybody different names, I didn't call your basis, and you have the audacity to come back again and say, mention my name, that I was the first councilman to say to those people that came the first or second night, you deserve bad. And I also resent that, you come out there and go and talk against your police. That's wrong. Our police are doing a fine job. If you have names, talk to your director. You have names, you're not a director, hold on. Excuse me, I have your floor. I have your floor. We didn't get off any of this, how good it is. I mentioned the fact, you are the one that you are. You know, we have a police that did a good job. You understand? We have, our police have done a great job. And if you have a prayer against any particular question, Mr. President, if you have a prayer against any direction, Mr. President, I have your floor. And it's empty complaining, any particular law, if you should call the police director, or you can't be pursued against, you did, you mentioned it. The president called the police director to the, to the general president. We get things done. You expect us, every time you come to say, for you, yes, I do feel so. You do deserve bad. But there is a proper way to go, but not to accuse us of your basis. Look at yourself in the mirror before you say something else. Mr. President, I think this is important, that it gets cleared out because we have three councilmen that took time to vote their project. We have time to vote the person, we question the individual people that are responsible, the individual people that are responsible. I am the sixth ward councilman, very proud of my award. And I do anything you have to do within my power. But right now, let me tell you something, we're trying to give the help, but I ain't trying to hide. And do you understand, there's nothing I can do for you?
Stay on the floor, please, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Counselor, you have a number of members here. Excuse me, sir, your honor, thank you. You are the owner of your own. And if people are not happy, put some, okay, escort you out, okay? Okay, I'll do it, we. That's all right. Any other council member would like to ask a question of the House of Authority? Mr. President? Counselor? Counselor, please, sir. Um, I don't, I do, I can, uh, support the Director Jones that you know here. I know that, I mean, uh, nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three, we were going to the Hope Six Development, converting my homes to a housing that we had out there. It was a different economy, it was different times. But then, as president, the Housing Authority and the federal HUD was willing to move in that direction, move and remove and eliminate, burn, hybrid system, townhouses. And I know we have a lot of vouchers, we have a hundred and eighty, two hundred, two hundred fifty vouchers that came from Washington to the residents of that area. And folks, those vouchers, and that was from Carolina, Georgia, and Northern Kentucky. Because there were no, unfortunately, why we are here, unfortunately, that situation was existing. And the only thing that we hope for, as the residents can hope for, is that in April of 2013, when the number of the, if they choose to apply for this opt-out council, that the HUD will approve it. We need to use the petition, uh, federal HUD that in Washington, residents should try to hand together, make a petition down to the federal representatives of the Senate, and then there's the Congress with the series, uh, where Congress is paying. They're trying to pressure the federal HUD that they will open a lot door and give some vouchers to us, but specifically to Oldwood Plaza. So that seems to be what I'm hearing, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
So I'm hoping that the residents of San Diego, if you can agree with me...
Yeah, I, I just, we, uh, that...
I couldn't agree with you to question the federal HUD.
I think, I think, it's a good idea, Sammy, to, 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 to talk with Ms. Johnson. When you take any part of this, and we did, you know, was a very professional matter. And I think it does stop, where the actual people are really pretending that they're being effective, you know, talking to people. So, so I hope that was a good thing. I mean, if you, I'm not against anybody, but if there's a Plaza application, but I consider it's going to happen, but it's going to take some time. I understand, but I hope you do not have a patient with this situation. But I can believe you, it will happen. If you sit with your daughter in this room right now, she has a, she personally, she is not eligible to be in the condition that is aimed at her. But it is more than her who wishes, that she has a round of need. Yeah, you know, excellent residents, show patience, and just present in the back, you have a backhand of size, okay? Until time takes care of some problems, we will continue to have this, this gap. And it's something that is, you know, like, you know, level of this in Spain and this trust. You know, but I'm believing in the daughter over, and the residents. Hopefully, I can help to this means six months from now, we'll be in the best circumstances. Uh...
Any other council member, like that's going to be councilman Jackson?
President, yeah, I have a few questions, um... Mr. Jones, you said something very interesting to me, and, and the light bulb went off in, in my head. And I know the people that come each council meeting, um, I, I, my heart bleeds for them because I, I go past them constantly, being vice principal at school twenty-three for many years, I, I helped raise many of those children that live in that complex. And, um, I have to say to you, and ask you, can you please elaborate on how the Board of Education here in Elizabeth had something to do with the application being denied in Trenton?
Well, it wasn't, I, I don't think, it was, it was a federal grant, and it was a very competitive federal grant. Uh, the fact of the relationship, and I'm not going to fault you by personal account, the fact of the relationship between CEO of Elizabeth and Board of Education in this particular city mitigated against a more successful consideration of that application. So there was city that submitted that application. I'm not sure how to spell the relationship between the city and Board of Education. We don't have that, okay? But that was, uh, a, a significant qualifier in that application, in that application. Uh, just, yeah, okay? Uh, I mean, can, this is the choice neighborhood, can, and, no, it's not, plenty of it. We submitted it to kind, and they, I can't tell you why they did it, but I'm sure those cities have the best relationship with the Board of Education that stores the situation.
Okay, I, I think that the residents here, that come here each week and, and talk, and talk to us about the, the problems that you face each and every day, or have listened to Mr. Jones, the Elizabeth Board of Education had a major play in this application being denied. Now, as you come here, and you did not know this until tonight. Now, as you come here, and I come here each and every week, I think it's great that you come here. But now, you need to go someplace else and find out how actually the application was denied by the Board of Education.
Well, the Board of Education is not going to be able to answer. Um, that application is done now, I mean, I don't, I appreciate that, so, I don't want to send residents out on a mission. We did not even get the agency that they don't want to be. So we didn't get that application. The fact is, is that the relationship had to be strong to get the best consideration now. Specifically, why we didn't get it, I can't tell you. I'm just telling you, we didn't have a, a freemular relationship, you know, but I don't want something to help, we didn't, that's, that is a basic question.
Hey, yeah, just to add to that, the Choice Neighborhoods application was a highly competitive application. There were six to eight awards nationally. So this isn't something where there was a lot of money put out to a lot of agencies. It was a very small pot of money that was being devoted to these projects. With the elimination of the Hope Six funds, Hope Six was replaced with Choice Neighborhoods, and they tapered down the amount of funding available to these programs, and they really tailored it, HUD, federal HUD, tailored it, tailored it to certain cities that they already knew were probably going to get. So, in effect, whatever's been put into the application, we might have had ten strikes in the end, but we didn't get the application.
Well, you know what's interesting to me, is that the, the Elizabeth Board of Education wasn't by any means, I don't know, laws.
Right.
Okay? So I'm sure that it had something to do with the decisions that happened to these four people.
Right.
They mis, misused funds. So now, these people have suffered. And it's not just that one place, there are many, many, many plays because of the Elizabeth Board of Education and what they did in the past, not what we did in the past, that have these people right here. These, these people who live in these conditions, suffering because of the misappropriation of funds from the Elizabeth Board of Education. Now, my colleague, Mr. Grover, mentions President Clinton. Well, guess what? In two weeks, we have another major election. And if we don't keep President Obama in office, re-elected, it's going to get worse, and there's no doubt about it. And if we don't work as citizens to change what's happening in Washington, and I've said this in twenty years, if we don't change the Republican Congress, no one is going, ever. So we need to start working on that right now. You can come here and argue it as all you want, but it's higher than the Elizabeth City Council. It's higher. You need to get to the Board of Education, you need to get your, to your representatives at the, uh, federal government level, Menendez and the others, and start walking just like you do here. Please, I beg you to do that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Have, have you been explaining to residents, why would I like to run for this project? Did you, did you? Have you been explaining to residents, why I don't like to run for this project?
No, I don't.
Yes, it has, and if you like to go over it again, that's fine. Yes, but I, I mean, this is why I said, this, this project, Oldwood Plaza, basically set up, I don't know, for years ago. This, this was, you know, like I said, I'm in the political, you know, back in our days, Oldwood Plaza was set up, okay? Under the Cross-Zone Commission, the financial, like, the wire, the building was set up. That put in the, we had reallocation, everything, you know, seamless. The administration changed, Trenton, the whole, a significant portion of the money was, was basically very difficult to keep. That's the essence of the problems that you would have began. Does it, who, Plaza, you know, but that was, that was a political decision that goes to Ms. Jackson's point. Uh, I, if, if, unless it doesn't work out in two weeks, we may not understand the, it is, it is that seamless. If, if, if you put it on this, it doesn't matter.
Any other questions, Mr. President, you might have had. I've had two times, because Mr. Jones is one hundred percent right. I've just, and I've heard many people talk, and they are frustrated just as much as I, but I put it down there. The local finance board in Trenton, they are the people who knocked this project right out. And the person in charge of that local finance board right now is appointed by Governor Chris, a Republican. Now, we all know, here at this city council, I don't know how much the, the people that come here each week know how close Elizabeth Board of Education is with the Republican government. But we have two years left of them. We have to start now. I've heard where Booker mentioned, I've heard a whole slew of people mention. We need to get behind the Democrat and replace the Republican, and then, unfortunately, it's two years left. the Democrat, and replace the Republican, and then, unfortunately, it's two years away, just like six months is away, April two thousand, but we gotta start now, we gotta start mobilizing, your votes, your people, your relatives, your friends, everybody, get the Republicans out of office, and that's the only way to work, leave me some.
Mr. President? Councilman King?
Uh, Bill, Bill, if you don't mind my asking, Bill, if you don't mind my asking, I, I don't know the answer to this, but you indicated earlier that you have some involvement with the Plaza situation, is, is, my question is, is there any federal, state, or local laws or regulations that provide you with an oversight responsibility with regard to the current situation of Opa-Plaza? Not the fact that they're building down the road, but the condition of the project doesn't exist today?
Uh, that's a good question, uh, there is, you know, the authority is the city of Tom, as well, Opa-Plaza is the, uh, check, Opa-Plaza is a private building, and the city is the, the city of Elizabeth, is a corporate one, we don't have the correct, you know, authority or oversight of, um, Opa-Plaza, do that authorization, right, to participate in, in, in structure, we need instruction of a person to go wrong in Opa-Plaza. Which will be public housing, public housing levels, so, we, we, we make that right, at least we do, we took this long, to get to the point, we started that mission, we constructed the Opa-Plaza.
That's the answer, is that this time, the House of Government has no authority over?
We don't have any, we're not, you know, um, we do, you know, we're very close to the city of Elizabeth, um, we will do whatever we can, you know, uh, to, 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 you know, to make Opa-Plaza happen, as a candidate, we're all sensitive, you know, to the needs and services of the residents, and the basic values, and that, that, and I don't know the rest, uh, people as well.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just, and then, Councilman.
Um, I just have two questions. One, I know, of course, you mentioned that in April of two thousand and thirteen, project-based vouchers, um, pretty much expired, and they have an opportunity to opt out. Um, the first question is, if they do not opt out, just for knowledge purposes, does it automatically renew? And the second question is, is the owner, does it automatically renew the project? And the second question is, of course, you can't speak for the owner, but are they leaning towards one word or another? Because I know personally, I'm totally for the tenant-based vouchers, that's what the residents want, that's, in my opinion, what they deserve, but just for our knowledge.
Um, to answer your second question first, I don't, I don't know what is the owner's intention, uh, insofar as whether she's going to renew or opt out. Uh, my gut is definitely she'll probably want to make a project-based voucher, only because she's got so much invested into it, with the tax credit deals and the other things, she's going to need those project-based vouchers to make, uh, to generate her cash flow, otherwise it would be basically, unless she, maybe still want her awesome, she would be mad at you. So, she's got tax credit monies in that deal that require grants, a certain money, project-based grants, or what she needs, probably, I'm just guessing, because I don't know the entire strategy here, uh, because these aren't facts, this is just my, you know, reaction here, so, we just talked directly about this, but I bet she wanted to do project-based vouchers. But again, it doesn't mean she may potentially be able to, uh, take some of the project-based vouchers, convert them, and save some for the sites that she didn't need to re-enroll. What's the other question, Jeff, perhaps?
It, just wanted officially, I was just worried, if twenty thirteen will happen, that's, if they do not opt out of hers.
That, that is, I never see it happen. And in this climate, in the climate, unfortunately, enabled, that's the fact, and it does happen. Uh, right now, HUD is operating, and the whole House of Commerce is operating on a continuing resolution that will go through the end of March. A continuing resolution funds us at last year's great subsidy and public finance section income. Uh, once the end of March comes, we don't want this going to happen. There is legislation now called sequestration, it will come down with that, which potentially, uh, reduces our subsidy and reduces the section income by initial six to seven percent. So, we're already being underfunded tremendously, at the House of Commerce, and, and again, with project-based vouchers as well, uh, but we're not looking, it doesn't actually that it gets in office, whether it's President Obama or Romney, but this sequestration regulation, if this doesn't happen, and it doesn't fail to return, there will be far-reaching housing implications, uh, and really, it's across the board, there's, like, customers are addressing everywhere, in every apartment, whether it's HUD, whether it's transportation, whether it's the, armed forces, it's everywhere. So, it is going to, two thousand and thirteen is going to be extremely difficult year, this isn't going to be better yet, not if it gets in the office.
Thank you. Mr. President, I just want to person, thank you for inviting House of Authority Representatives here. I do want to request if the owners of Opa-Plaza will be able to come back, and just, I know that they, she was here, but at that meeting, a lot of the members, um, the, the residents of Opa-Plaza, they weren't present, it's just really important that there's clear communication for all the residents on what is exactly happening, um, because I think that's one of the biggest issues that the residents have experienced, it's just the fact that communication was pretty much non-existent, and I feel as though they're not supposed to be in any way, shape, or form, Kevin and Dar, so even with those statements that you mentioned, even now, I just think it's important for the residents to really know clearly on what's the intentions of the owners. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman, thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. President, I think it really matters, uh, who wins the election, even though, um, there are items that are going to be cut out of the HUD budget across the board.
It's not just HUD.
Right, of course, I mean, in all, in all governmental, federal agencies, it definitely is extremely going to matter, uh, who wins the election in two weeks from today. Uh, secondly, my, um, issue is that, come April, if there's some maneuvering with these section A certificates, whether they're project-based, or, uh, if they're tenant-based, and if they're cut, what is going to happen to those residents who suffer with this situation, and then they'll be cut out of, maybe section A, maybe subsidized housing? That's, that's, that would be the real, um, you know, that would just be the real sin, there's already enough sin in this situation, but that would be like a double sin on these residents, who are trying to stick it out, trying to work with this process, and then come April, according to what you just said, if things are being cut, some of those residents may still lose after going through all of this hell, through all this period, and then they'll be dealt with the fact that HUD is still going to cut them off. So, that's why we need to rally, like, now, like, what they're doing now, so that that doesn't happen come April. April will be here, but it's too far away from what they're dealing with at the present time.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I, I think any existing resident that is, that is receiving, um, at least for now, this group of residents, will not be cut out, okay? Whether they have to stay, or whether they get to tip out to, uh, going forward. The, the problem is, with the public housing program, the section A program, uh, there is legislation on the books, that's by the Senate and the House, but does, which does for, for a good, additional assistance, eight percent, uh, a certain debt level is, uh, are not used, so, the only man I have in the main room, they have to send the House to go back and, you know, book shit, that, that, that was important. I, I think that, you know, I may, I may get back to, 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 uh, President Gonzalez to answer, uh, some of Councilman's questions, particularly this, they were the questions. I, I think that, you know, going forward with the opt-out, you know, I think you speak on the system, how to make vouchers, on the books, uh, I don't think the idea is to have a, a three hundred minutes where it's all finished, so, I think the idea is to divert, uh, some of, some of the, uh, the existing project-based vouchers into, uh, you know, a regular voucher, a portable voucher, but I, I, I'm just, I'm just, of course, as a fellow person, I do, in that way, that's, this is a question.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But I think, I think, to the Councilman, I think that, I, I'm not here to do Mr. Ball, because I don't, I don't know what's going to happen, like, if, I, I'm just trying to do Mr. Ball, because that's sequestration, it hangs heavily over our head, because the overall level is down significantly, it wasn't being recommended, it's already down to like eight percent of what's needed, since the project, section A is being squeezed, or administrative level, you know, we manage our own, we're very most respected by the Opa-Plaza, I'm not going to Mr. Ball's, or any of the future.
Any other questions, uh, the Director?
Well, if not, I'd like to thank you, Director Jones, and the Director for coming on this evening, and I think it was very informative, uh, and the information that you shared, and hopefully, the residents have a federal, uh, op-ops system, and how it works, and where it may be going, um, and I know it's frustrating for everybody, and it's emotional for the residents, I mean, I've been there, and, uh, you know, I see what, what they live through, what they go through each and every day, you know, and it's frustrating for you, I realize that, and people is frustrated for us, because we want to do so much more, and unfortunately, like, Councilman Masindik, our hands are tied, so what I can do is, when I'm going now, is, uh, inviting, I'm the House of Attorney Director, I'm hopeful that next month, uh, the administration will send some of its representatives here to meet with us, so we can ask some of the same questions, and get some information from them as well, so that this way, the residents will, uh, will have more information as well, even while, even though I see most of the residents have left, you know, for those of you that are here, I mean, it's important to understand what's being said here, in terms of the petitions that residents need to make, but I think, Councilor communicated about petition, the federal HUD about this, okay, now, I think you need to start with C I S, and petitioning them, they opt out in April of two thousand and thirteen, so, and, and then, we have to hope that the federal HUD will approve, you know, so, but also, we talked about contacting the federal representatives, which is very important, we're straight representatives. We talked about, again, hiring, getting together, maybe getting a term, to help manage it for you, if you're shipwrecked or, you know, I said that before, and said it several times, right? You know, we are doing everything that we can, uh, for you, you know, I know right now, it's not helping you, because you're going to go through this process, you have to see that dirt there, and you have to deal with the broken elevators, and the leaks, and the holes, and, and all sorts of things, you know, and, you know, we feel for you, we definitely do, I mean, you know, but it's, it's not easy, it's difficult, it's a complicated situation, uh, you know, and we're just hopeful that as time goes on, it's, it's, it has been worked for some, residents, that there's something's happening, it's not great, you know, but there are some small gains that are happening, so, I'm hopeful that that will change. Okay?